Okay, it's 7:01, time to call this meeting to order. Everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mr. Taylor, if you'd like to lead us in tonight's prayer?
Dear Lord, allow us to make the decisions for the city for the best of all that live here, work here, play here. Continue to make strides towards progress and improvements within the city. Keep us all safe. In your name we pray.
Call.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Childs?
Here.
Mr. Dumpy?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Booth? Mr. Smith?
Here.
Motion to excuse Mr. Booth for tonight's meeting.
Some move. Second.
And Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes. Hope he enjoys his vacation.
Hopefully Matt Geo doesn't get him. So, all right. Uh, everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last regular meeting? Any council discussion on said minutes? Motion to approve. Some move. Second.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
All right. Uh, we're moving on to citizens' comments. Okay, one of those. Business and organizational comments. Those. Committee discussions.
Uh, planning and development met twice. Uh, we have, I think the committee has agreed to, in principle, some rules and uh, boundaries for the DORA, but there are still two outstanding requirements from the Ohio Revised Code that we have to satisfy. Um, those being that we need to compile a range of addresses that are affected, and we need to post those publicly for thirty days before the ordinance be passed by council. So, we will get to work putting those together, but uh, we've had a lot of great interaction from the public on this, um, a lot of good input, and people are enthusiastic about it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I do have a question on that. Does there have to be a public hearing for that? Is that similar? No? Okay.
Just have a public announcement.
I believe, I believe there's a codified, or I believe there's an ordinance thirty-three dash fourteen we need to look at.
Okay.
Um, it was brought to my attention by the former, uh, code enforcement officer that, uh...
What did you say that was?
Thirty-three dash fourteen, codified. Um, and just check that, check that out, and, and, and look at that, see what that entails. So...
Uh, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Um... Department updates. Who do we have tonight? Mr. Barber or Mr. Cuthbert? Mr. Cohen, floor is yours. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, we're gonna start with the street sweeper. It's still down. They thought it was an oil pressure sensor. Got it changed, and it was still having the same issue. It run pretty good for about ten minutes with the new sensor. When they started again, they started, uh, going through the wiring on it. They had it running today for about fifteen minutes, and when they did, it blew the dipstick clear out, and they can't find the dipstick. It blew out so hard. It's building pressure.
That's usually head gaskets.
And it's keeping it away from the sensor, so...
It's pressurizing the combustion chamber.
Yeah. So, as of right now, the sweeper's still down. More oil dipstick if you need one. Asphalt. We put down about fifteen tons since the last update. We'll be out the rest of the week doing potholes, the rest of this week. We've got the guys from up at store. We've been getting three guys a day from up at store. They've been weed eating. They're helping with asphalt. Starting to get a lot of stuff, using them for everything. They love being out, down, helping us. So... Well... Water line cleanup, where they put in the new water mains, is underway. As Rock River is working on their punch-out list. Wednesday, there will be flag traffic on Elm Rock Road to repair the open cut across the road. It'll be one lane at a time, so there will be a minor traffic disruption down there with flaggers. Um, the meter project is still underway. We have a meeting tomorrow. They're supposed to come back in town and start auditing. A lot of units know some of the lids don't fit right. We've had a lot of issues with that. We're having some issues with meters not matching up where they're supposed to be. If everybody could bear with us, we're working on the problem. We've had thirteen leaks since the last meeting. And here recently, we've been working pretty hard on the INI problem in the sewer system. We had a small issue last week.
It's not a small issue. We need to talk about that.
We had an issue last week where there was a sewer main that we did not know about. We've not seen prints. Can't find prints on it. Um, we found a manhole buried about four inches under asphalt that nobody knew was there. Dave's been here for twenty years and had no clue it was there. Um, it's coming down off of Grosner, down Marietta, and coming in underneath the... Oh, what's that building it's got?
It's in...
That it's under.
It's in between the two half-cap buildings where the daycare center is and the other half-cap building.
So, there was a, there was a backup. Um, the contractor that's in town doing gas work hit this, hit the sewer. Didn't realize they hit it, backfilling, and it plugged up. And last week during our torrential downpours, it backed sewer up into the childcare. And was flowing through it. So, we, we've got the pipe fixed, the sewer mains fixed. But we're working on the INI. We had a camera crew in town to camera it, but it was dry. We're gonna wait until we have a downpour, and they're gonna come over and push it again so we can see where it's infiltrating, because there was a lot of water coming off of it.
So, I'd like to expand on that. Um, he, it can't be, it pressurized the entire sewer system and shot water inside that building. They have a significant amount of damage. Uh, they've gone through multiple roll-off dumpsters, pulling their equipment, and their, uh, all the stuff of kids. Luckily, there was no kids in the building at the time. This is their downtime. They're set to open back up, I believe, August first. Um, I'm not sure what that looks like to them, if they're gonna be able to get open back up or not. Um, as far as liability goes and who's at fault for it, uh, I've already talked to our insurance. I know what their position is on it. Um, I know what the standard answer is for, um... What is it? People want to say Rock River, but R and R.
R and R.
R and R pipeline standard position on it is, it's our responsibility to mark the mains. Our insurance position on it is, did you know it was there? The answer's no. So, we have qualified immunity. And, um, and then back to R and R, how did they not know that they, they didn't just hit it once, they hit it multiple times? They dug out an eight-inch pipe, three feet wide. So, how did they do that and not know that they did that?
Tore the whole top out of it.
Yeah, the whole top off of it. So, um, I'm not really sure how that's gonna shake out, but, uh, it's already turned over to our insurance. Their insurance is already taken, uh, when I say their, I mean the, uh, half-cap building, their insurance has already taken over as far as the cleanup goes. Um, our insurance is notified, and I would have figured that the three of those will get it out, and that'll be bad. But it, it was a very big mess.
And, but the pipe is fixed and...
The pipe is fixed. It's good to go now. Uh, everything's flowing. It's been jetted, cleaned out.
And, and then, like he said, we sent camera crews up there, and we mapped everything that we could find with camera crews.
Everything's been GIS. So, that way it's, it's where it does it now.
The manhole that you said was four inches, was that, that was in Grosner?
It was at Grosner and High.
Okay. Right in the middle of the road, excuse me, right in the middle of the road. Okay.
Oh, I know exactly where you're at. Hey, every print we had showed everything from up on top of Grosner coming over to Marietta, going out to St. Charles, and down to Poplar. This is, every print we've got shows that. And this one, it comes off and runs right behind the houses on St. Charles and comes, comes down.
And that's something that we've run into with water valves. Um, we find water valves have been asphalted over. That's one of our standard practices now is to take a metal detector and look for water valves in the street. So, we've found multiple that were buried under asphalt. Makes for fun times. All right. So, I've, just to recap real quick, everybody, Jason and the city is aware, we're all aware of the problems with the meter bases, or with the meter lids. That is going to be addressed, so...
We have a meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Cause I have heard it from several people, so...
They're supposed to be starting an audit this week, going out.
Thank you. Okay.
I've got a question. So, this morning we had a, I saw the guys out on, uh, West Washington there first.
We had, we had a tree yesterday. There, there was a, so, one tree fell yesterday and got cut out of the way. Fire department called me. I came down and looked. There was, there was a fairly decent-sized pine tree that's been leaning for years. Um, the police department was out there. Between the three of us, we discussed it, and we decided to take it down because the root ball was actually starting to pull out of the ground. And, uh, pine trees have a, a small root base, and on the hillside, it's, if, if it was already pulling out. So, we decided to cut it down. We just took a hoe up and pushed it all off the road, just since it was Sunday, just get it out of the way. And, uh, this morning we went up, cut it up, moved it off the road, got everything, brought back here.
All right. Anyone else? Any more questions for Mr. Cohen? All right. Thank you, sir. Chief Barber, the floor is yours.
All right. Um, one of the valuables, again, uh, this year, with COVID-19 affecting prices and shipping, last year, it seemed like our show was short, uh, smaller than normally it is. So, this year we increased, um, by approximately sixty-six percent on what we pay out for the show. And it, that, the show is actually a little bit larger than it was last year. We still had a twenty-eight-minute show, which, what we have been told, is still longer than many of the shows that were around us. So, another successful year. Um, we've been seeing a spike in overdose calls over the past couple of weeks. Uh, just last week, we had four overdoses in one day. Uh, since last month, we've responded to a hundred and six emergency calls within the city. Well, just like PD, we still, every, you know, every month we see an uptick in emergency calls. Um, on June twenty-eighth, crew members spent the evening performing water rescue training. Uh, with the increase in water rescue calls that we have in the city and outside of the city, we try to hop on any time, any time we can actually get the boats out and get our newer members in the water. Uh, I've continued a river sign project that was started on the other side of Hocken County. What this program is, is it, they will mark the river every half-mile downstream, and the markers are larger aluminum signs with reflective covering. And basically what it is, is each jurisdiction will have a different color. So, we're trying to, we've responded to a lot of calls where somebody will call in on the river, and they don't know where they are. Cause that takes a lot of time running up and downstream to try to figure out where these people are, because as we all know, we can't get our boats in and actually go upstream or downstream in all areas of the river because there's, excuse me, spots are shallow. So, what this program will allow us to do is somebody can call in and say, I don't know where I am. All I know is I saw a pink sign, or I saw a yellow sign. That'll tell us which jurisdiction they're in. So, I started my program from, well, from the Hocking County line is two-point-two miles where we get to our jurisdiction. So, the four-and-a-half miles of river that we have that runs through the city of Nelsonville will be marked every half-mile. So, if somebody does have something that happens, those river signs will be there, and they're actually marked every half-mile on the river. And I do have to get landowner's permission. Most of this Hocking college, one of them is, uh, Justin. Um, but we shouldn't have any problem at all getting landowner's permission to put a sign up on a tree on the side of the river. I just dropped the, uh, sample to sign off the Kim line today, and I'm waiting on, um, a quote. That way I can go ahead and get that money encumbered. Uh, some of our dive team members participated in dive training this past weekend, and then like all the certifications, we had to continually train and log the training for each specific certification. Uh, bringing up COVID-19 again, um, we have definitely seen a delay in shipping of everything, bumper gear, fire hoses, anything you can think of. AED batteries, pads. We've placed orders six months ago and not received stuff for AEDs yet. We're not doing anyone's having problems. Everybody's having problems right now. Um, the twenty-twenty FEMA grant that was awarded to the fire department, we're just now seeing fire hose show up at the fire department with this grant, and that was a twenty-twenty FEMA grant. That's how far behind everything is. And that's only a partial shipment of some of the hoses that we've received already. Um, in August, we'll be participating with, in rope rescue training with Athens Fire Department. This training will take place in Athens. Councilman Booth forwarded an email to myself and Scott regarding some electrical vehicle training that was provided, or is provided for General Motors. We're in the process right now of getting something lined up of that and getting that on the agenda. Um, August fourth, a lot of people don't know, a lot of our members are actually members of the region set in Saltwater Rescue Team and Dive Team. So, August fourth, we have some training in a meeting that will take place in Wellesley. And I had a reminder in here, during these odd days, we haven't had any calls this year yet, though we did have calls last year. Uh, people leaving animals and children in hot vehicles during the day. A lot of people don't realize how rapidly a vehicle will, uh, the heat will rise inside the vehicle. So, I wanted to look, I wanted to give an example. So, if the outside temperature is eighty to ninety degrees, we have seen them logged with our thermal guns that we have, temperatures from a hundred and fourteen to a hundred and forty-five degrees in a car within twenty minutes. Even at sixty-eight degrees outside, if you have windows rolled up in a vehicle, you're talking temperatures within twenty degrees, twenty-eight minutes of over a hundred degrees. People don't realize that. It's very rapid. And, uh, last year we pulled, uh, somebody's pet out of a vehicle. It was a hundred, it was almost a hundred fifty degrees in the vehicle in forty minutes. So, I wanted to reiterate on that, um, because we haven't had any of those calls yet this year, but we did have some last year. And that is all I have.
Any questions for Chief Barber?
I do. Uh, the electric vehicle training, that sounds interesting. So, what do you, uh, what kind of training is, like, if it catches on fire, or...
Well, there's, there are many dangers of electrical, of electric vehicles. And the problem of electric vehicles is every manufacturer has different cut areas. Every manufacturer has different colors of wiring, uh, high voltage wiring that you're not allowed to cut or touch. Um, the lithium batteries pose a significant risk in event of fire. We have seen fire departments, none around here, not yet. We have seen fire departments that have utilized forty thousand gallons of water, but out one vehicle. And if they didn't keep that vehicle submerged for a number of hours after that, it would actually reignite. The batteries would reignite. So, electric vehicles pose a lot of different risks. Um, the Mustang, for example, if that vehicle's wet in an accident, we can't cut on the vehicle's body at all. There have been studies already where the vehicle's body is energized when, when the vehicle is submerged. Um, it's a definite, it's, it's not like it used to be. It used to be, we show up when an entrapment accident, we know exactly how to cut, how to get them out rapidly. It's ever-changing now, and with the bypass and multi-charging stations in town, we fully anticipate seeing more in more accidents involving electric vehicles. But every manufacturer's different, and that's, it's really hard to keep up with that.
Um, is there a different, uh, like, I know different types of fires sometimes require, like, some fires you can put out easily with water, some you have to have a dry substance or whatever to put out. I mean, are we gonna need, is that something we, we're gonna potentially need for different types of fires like this?
Well...
I don't know if that's stuff you carry on your trough?
It's like magnesium blocks and stuff in vehicles where, uh, everybody knows what happens with magnesium when it's burning, you get water. You get really nice fireworks. Uh, it's very different when it comes to lithium batteries, because the only thing that's gonna put out lithium batteries, they even buried them before, is coated with lots of water. You have to continually, so, I mean, forty thousand gallons of water for a vehicle fire is a tremendous amount of water, because by the time that vehicle burns, there's nothing left except the battery bank, and the battery bank is what these fire departments have actually had a hard time extinguishing. And there's a lot of towing companies now that if you have a vehicle that involves, uh, I'm sorry, a vehicle fire that involves lithium batteries, the transport companies will not put them on their vehicles and haul them out for a number of days because they can reignite. It's, it's something that, when, when electric vehicles first came out and first were getting popular, I started to make CDs and make booklets, keep logs in vehicles, and what happened was, we would have a sat as big as one of these tables, as wide as one of these tables, and not have the information that we needed, because it's constantly changing. Each manufacturer is different. There's not one standard. And that's what makes it unique.
Okay. Thanks, Peter.
I actually read an article last night about Teslas that were catching on fire and burning up on the side of the road, just driving down the road, and they catch on fire. They were having a real issue with that, so...
Any more questions for Chief Barber?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, I definitely understand what the, the different risk would be when there's water involved, if there, and which, if the accident involves the car being wet, or even if it is raining, like you said. But if that is not a factor, is there not, like, new councilman's name, not, not new councilman? I couldn't, I couldn't tell who was saying that, was asking about the fire. Like, the kind of, like, fire agent, I, I don't, you know, the various kinds of extinguishers that you use.
Correct.
And like, I understand that the jaws of life can't just, like, go in there in a wet car, because you might get electrocuted, kind of the concern. Um, but is there not, like, if there's not water involved, is there, oh, I mean, supply chains being what they are, is there a way, is there a thing that can be purchased in huge quantities to use in dry situation?
No, it's gonna be some amount of water. Lithium burns very aggressively and very hot. Uh, so, when, if the lithium battery banks do get fired, the whole point, the whole point of fire service, when it comes to an electric vehicle fire, is to not allow the fire to get the battery banks. If the fire gets in battery banks, it's very expensive.
Yeah, I bet. Sounds like, I've not heard about this before. It sounds like mini tiny Chernobyl. Compared to, like, just in a car, you know?
It's, it's a pretty aggressive burn.
It's gotta keep going until it's done.
Uh, there are some places that...
That was a bad metaphor.
Well, no, right. But there are some places that actually couldn't put them out and just let, let them burn up.
Yeah.
Let them sit there and burn holes into the highways.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the only thing, there's not a special agent that we can use for a lithium fire. It's just very large amounts of water.
Mm-hmm.
We need to rapidly cool and smother the fire.
So, there's no other chemical?
We have, right, we have to get the temper down.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Chief Barber. All right. Um, moving on to some ordinances here. We need to amend the agenda to add um, fifty-four dash twenty-two. So, motion to add ordinance fifty-four dash twenty-two to the agenda. Some move. Second.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
All right. We're on to first reading, uh, of ordinance fifty-three dash twenty-two. Can someone introduce it, please? Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept, and enter into an Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan account, or W S R L A agreement on behalf of the city of Nelsonville for design of the Phase Two Water System Improvement Project, and then designating a dedicated repayment source for loan financing and declaring emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville seeks to design the twenty-twenty-two Water System Improvement Project, and whereas the city of Nelsonville intends to apply for Ohio EPA Water Supply Revolving Loan Account financing for the project, and whereas the Ohio EPA requires the government authority to pass legislation to apply for loan financing and the execution of an agreement, as well as designating a dedicated repayment source for loan financing. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio. It is necessary to complete Phase, the Phase Two Water System Improvement Project for the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city of Nelsonville. It is necessary to apply for design financing from the Ohio EPA Water Supply Revolving Loan Account. The city manager of the city of Nelsonville will be and is hereby authorized to request from the Ohio EPA Water Supply Revolving Loan Account the financing required to complete the design of the project. The method of repayment of design financing from the Ohio EPA Water Supply Revolving Loan Account shall be water revenues generated from Nelsonville Wire customer. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, Section four point zero nine through four point one-one. As an emergency in the operation of the city government, and if necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city, this ordinance shall be in full force and effective upon its adoption. Fully enacted by council the eleventh day of July, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. Any council discussion on this matter? Motion to suspend. Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Move to a dog. Second dog.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Okay. Um, moving on here. Ordinance fifty-three dash twenty-two. Need someone to introduce it, please? I'll introduce it. Thank you.
An ordinance approving wastewater treatment plant Phase Two Change Order Three for Nelsonville Regional Collection System Project and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has entered into a contract Phase Two Wastewater Treatment Plant, whereas the additional changes to the contract are recommended in order to complete the contract. Whereas this will be Change Order Three for the project, whereas the change will increase the contract price by eighteen thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars and forty-six cents, and is summarized as attached in Exhibit One. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city of Nelsonville hereby approves Change Order Three for the Phase Two Wastewater Treatment Plant contract as described in Exhibit One attached hereto, and incorporated into this ordinance as if rewritten fully within. Contract price will be increased by a sum of eighteen thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars and forty-six cents. The change is necessary to bring CO-three Proline electric charges to bring fiber into the electrical room. City Manager Scott Frank shall have the authority to enter into, accept, and/or authorize the contract change order for Phase Two Wastewater Treatment Plant contract as shown in Exhibit One. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, Section four point zero nine through four point one-one. As an emergency in the operation of the city government, and if necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effective upon its adoption. Fully enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the eleventh day of July, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. Any, any council discussion on this? All right.
Well, uh, yeah, I have a question. Thank you. Uh, what, what, I, I'm, uh, completely layman. Why, why do we need to bring fiber into the electrical room?
Fiber into the electrical room?
Yeah.
It's gonna service the whole plant for the, uh, Wi-Fi.
Oh, great. Okay.
Or, not Wi-Fi, but internet.
Yeah, okay. So, fiber option. Got it.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Motion to suspend. Some move. Second.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Child?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Motion to adopt. So move.
Second.
Uh Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Child?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yeah. Okay. Ordinance fifty-four dash twenty-two. Need someone to introduce it, please? I'll introduce it. Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept, enter into and or approve the July sixth two thousand twenty-two professional services agreement Nelsonville Water System Improvement Phase Two and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville's Water System Improvement Phase Two project was awarded a fifty percent grant funding. Whereas in order to maintain that fifty percent grant funding, the city of Nelsonville needs to submit plans in a timely manner. Whereas the city of Nelsonville conducted a general engineering services procurement on November twelfth two thousand twenty-one and selected B L Z to report engineering services as needed when projects arrive. Whereas water projects are included in that procurement scope with B L Z. Whereas it has been recommended by B L Z division manager Michael Betts that the city of Nelsonville approved the attached engineering agreement as exhibit one on an emergency basis so that the fifty percent grant funding can be obtained. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio. The city manager shall have the authority to accept, authorize, enter into and or approve the July sixth two thousand twenty-two professional services agreement Nelsonville Water System Improvement Phase Two on behalf of the city. The July sixth twenty twenty-two professional services agreement Nelsonville Water System Improvement Phase Two is attached hereto as exhibit one and incorporated by reference as it fully rewritten in this ordinance. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code seven thirty-one point thirty, Article four, section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption, duly enacted by council the eleventh day of July two thousand twenty-two.
Any council discussion on this matter? Okay, motion to suspend. Salute. Second.
Um Mr. Child?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Motion to adopt. So move.
Second.
Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Child?
Yes. Okay. Now we are to resolution twenty-two seventy-five. Need someone to introduce it, please? I'll introduce it.
The resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept and enter into an Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan account agreement on behalf of the city of Nelsonville for design of the phase two water system improvement project and designating a dedicated repayment source for loan financing. Whereas the city of Nelsonville seeks to design the two thousand twenty-two water system improvements project and whereas the city of Nelsonville intends to apply for Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan account financing for the project and whereas the Ohio EPA requires the government authority to pass legislation to apply for loan financing and the execute- execution of an agreement as well as designating a dedicated repayment source for loan financing. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio. It is necessary to complete the phase two water system improvements project for the health, safety and welfare of the residents of the city of Nelsonville. It is necessary to apply for design financing from the Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan account. The city manager of the city of Nelsonville be and is hereby authorized to request from the Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan account the financing required to complete the design of the project. The method of repayment of design financing from the Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan account shall be water revenues generated from Nelsonville Water Customer. This resolution shall be in full force and effect upon its passage, duly enacted by council on the eleventh day of July two thousand twenty-two.
All right. Any council discussion? All right, motion to adopt. So move. Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Child?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes. All right, um city managers report.
Mr. Frank?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for passing all that legislation to get us going on a couple of new projects. Uh first thing, uh refresh everybody's memory, we did a historical marker request a few months back, um the E M post and project that if awarded, we would be putting that over by the E V chargers. Um in case you forgot that uh Nelsonville had the first alternating current electricity in Ohio on the same side of the Alleghenies, if you will. And the first house uh was the one right there next to where the chargers are, so um good news is we were approved by the Ohio Historical Association. And uh we're not exactly sure when that'll be, but I want to give a huge shout out to the team that made that happen and that was uh Mary K Walsh, Miranda LeClain, Linda Westfall, John Hartley and Betty Jo Parsley. So they did a fantastic job on that package on very short notice and uh we did get the approval, so we will get that at some point. We asked for October. They told us not to hold our breath in so nice of terms, but uh it will be sometime soon. Uh went to council meeting uh over in Bookdole last week. It was good. We showed them the map that uh of all the water lines getting changed, including the loop over there, which will improve their service drastically. So uh they were happy with that. Tomorrow evening, meeting with the Chancy Mayor and Master Mayor here uh to go over the Ohio builds. Monies that the governor announced for southeastern Ohio and potential options and what that looks like, basically just trying to get our feet on the ground, what the rules are and the uh what their ideas are, get all of our ideas on the same page and uh see what other partners we're gonna roll up with this as a group to uh go forward and present to council. I would suspect that there'll be a lot of committee meetings following that meeting to uh get everybody's ideas and see what uh what we wanna do going forward as a community.
Do you know the criteria yet that you're allowed to spend the monies on?
I don't. So I have a very rough idea. Um but the governor just did the final signing last week or at the end of the week before, so that's tomorrow what we're gonna go over and get basically marching orders and uh come back, I'll come back to you guys and we'll go from there. Let's see, found out uh August first, we are hoping to start construction on the V F W lift station right here, so that'll get that uh problem out of our air. We had the pre-con for phase three sewer. Um it looks like we're gonna start if all goes well beginning of October. The contractor wants to start over off of uh Woodling Drive, so he wants to start on that section over there and get that entire area done and uh he's hopeful it'll be done by the end of the year and move over to this side uh around the beginning of the year, so. As Jason mentioned, water meters meetings tomorrow should be interesting considering they're supposed to be done in March. The submitting the nature works grant, you guys already approved us to move forward on, uh we're submitting it that deadline is Wednesday for that, so uh that's for the shelter house to go down, the potential dog park area and a lot of in kind, right now the estimate that uh would be our share and likely the dog park uh committee share would be eight thousand dollars and that would be for the engineering and the uh it's four thousand for the engineering, four thousand for I'm losing it, but uh it was eight thousand total and the rest of it would be grant and then the other uh twelve thousand would be in kind labor of the both prisons together, the shelter itself. The new playground uh from the last age works grant from two thousand nineteen, uh if ever that uh Mr. Taylor was telling me about that finally appeared this year uh is supposed to be in by the end of this month, so I got a message from the lady last week. She said in the next two weeks, so I think it's just a matter of waiting on it to come in on the truck and then she's gonna give me a heads up. It will go down that poly field. It's gonna be on the front side of the uh the shelter house there, so as soon as you come into the park, it'll be right there. And uh some may have noticed that we took a dozer down there and flattened off the park behind the shelter house and that's for a future piece of equipment. And then uh long-term plans are smaller pieces of equipment sprinkled in there and uh we wanna put some guard rail up going down Railroad Street and then also going down Watkins Street, going into the park just to protect that area and hopefully stop a little kid from running out the street, but also protect from a car going in or around and more importantly, keeping cars from going in there in winter time. Uh let's see, we have a meeting with the school uh later this Friday about a potential in con- so in conjunction with water uh in conjunction with water grant that we got approved for. The school had a meeting as well and they were able to obtain some funding which uh blends perfectly with our water project to add another water tank over in Bookdole. So we will have plenty of water between Bookdole, the new or the uh grant we just got for water. And then in addition to that, we're also working with the state and will likely be adding the tank that's at the old prison up on the hill there. That will likely be coming in onto our water system as well. So the old prison, um they had currently have a pump station that's no longer any good. What they want to do is add a new pump station at the bottom of the hill where Pleasant View and Scott split. And then uh connect the tank into our water system when we put the new lines in. And then over in Bookdole would be an addition of a brand new water tank. At that point, we will not have a water volume problem that I can think of anywhere in the city. Of course, we won't have any pressure problems either. In fact, we'll have to reduce pressure in multiple areas just to keep from over pressurizing the system. But uh lots of change happening in the uh water world, especially for Bookdole. Our Bookdole customers are gonna have more water than they know it can do with very soon. And then uh we purchased a couple of pieces of equipment last, late last week, or was it early this week? I don't know. It's putting together. But uh we got a new sweeper for the front of the skid steer that uh stole the idea from the key, but the guys are able to go out there and clean the streets now, way better before asphalting, but uh also uh anytime there's just debris on the road, instead of tearing up our street sweeper, so far it's been working fantastic. You guys love it. We also got a stump removal gear with a grapple and they've already learned after the tree that went down today that they can actually clean up trees faster because they don't have to cut up the trees as small and they can just load up whole logs eight feet long, as long as they're not too big in diameter and throw them in the truck and off they go. So that's all I got pending your questions.
I have something.
Yeah.
We have a pre-construction meeting on Wednesday for the river crossing.
Oh, even have that written down? Yeah, that's correct. So Wednesday we have uh like you said, the pre- pre-con, I think the last I heard, the potential start date will be in August to run our main, so we'll have our second main going underneath the river.
Do we, do we refresh my memory? We said this before, how much, do we know how much water we're losing from that line right now?
It's currently shut off.
You got that one shut off?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So it's isolated.
So replacing that though, that'll help in case we get a break and we need to shut the other main off the.
Correct.
River, the whole city won't have to be helped.
Well, right now, when that actually broke the first time, it uh we bypassed it. That's what probably sprung a lot of leaks around town because we put more pressure.
On the other side.
Or those smaller ones. And if we would have this, we would have the line from the bridge out. It shuts everything off in town.
I may actually have a couple of little leaks on this line that we know of. We weren't untouched until the new lines in.
Thank you for all our work.
Yeah, make a leak for now.
Any more questions for Mr. Frank?
Yeah, I have a question on the street sweeper. That's that's very concerning that we're uh in the position we are with this thing, being as new as it is. Jason, does it keep track of how many hours it's in operation? How many hours?
I don't know right offhand how many hours on, but I do know it's not under warning.
It's not under warning, that's where I was going.
It's the motor on the sweeper itself and it's not under warning.
Wow.
How many horsepower motor is it?
It's a two point three Cummins.
Oh, it's a Cummins. Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Frank. All right, uh good to be order. Mr. Clint?
Yeah, uh normally in July and August, council alone cancels the second meeting. Is that still gonna happen this year?
Um I don't foresee a problem with it. We're actually gonna talk about that, so it's a good time as many as any. Um I don't foresee a problem canceling the second meeting of the month unless there's some kind of. For July and August in case there's, because a lot of us will be on vacation, um unless there's emergency. Uh legislation needs passed, we call special meeting. Does council have any problem with that? We normally do that. Anyone? Okay, all right, so be it.
Okay, that will do that. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Taylor?
Um I appreciate Scott's report tonight. Um I I think it uh helps uh put into perspective some of all the projects that we have going on in in town and I appreciate that. You know, your ability to, you know, deal with all those situations and and continue to do that in such a great fashion and you've got a good team that continue to do that. I wanna thank Mr. Barber for uh the fireworks and his crew and all the work they did for that and uh it seemed like we had a pretty good crew that came into town as far as wanting to watch the display, so. Um so I'm excited for that and uh just, you know, enjoy the rest of your summer. I regret that for me.
Thank you. Mr. Child?
Uh Friday, the city manager gave me the nickel tour of the city, uh the administration and the physical city itself. And all I wanna say very briefly is I was very impressed with what I saw, both in the personnel, uh the department heads, the division chiefs, um the projects that are ongoing out there, everything that I looked at just reinforced my opinion that Nelsonville has identified some problems. They've got the right people in place to fix those problems and uh as you said, we have a great team here and I'd like to see us continue to grow forward. So I'm I'm very pleased and and thanks for your time on Friday and for your work.
Um my tour was a quarter, I'm just saying.
It's because you kind of got.
I didn't get a, I didn't get a tour. My boots were dry. Listen, listen, that is the first time I've been to the sewer plant and there was no odor. I was so disappointed. I was like, what is wrong with this place?
It used to be the welcome of Nelsonville.
Ooh. So, well, that would be a great thing, so.
All right, um I'm just thankful uh thankful for our street department and water department and all the utilities, of course, you know, thirteen leaks the last, since the last meeting. You know, that's a lot of leaks. Um hopefully one of these days you won't have to worry about leaks and water lines in the whole world, so. Um you know, of course, the police and fire department always do a good job, become spoiled in that in that manner. Uh it's nice to be spoiled in that manner. We didn't used to be, so. Thanks for them, so. And of course for Mr. Scott Frank and all the grant funding um and the money that we get for the city, uh you know, someone's not there doing the paperwork, it goes unnoticed. Uh it only, it's only noticed when there's a major problem and hopefully we don't have any more major leaks or issues or anything like that, so thank you for that, sir. All right, Mr. Sherman?
Well, yeah, like thanks fire department as well for their stellar performance again on the fireworks. Um been a lot of places in the country and seen a lot of fireworks and Nelsonville definitely competes with all those shows. Uh also Pride Sarah Kemper event, even though it was you know in competition with another, I think, the Washmore.
The Washmore Festival.
Yeah, yeah. About the gas inhalation situation, we were still able to raise a thousand dollars for the Jeff Arms Firefighter Scholarship. So we've written a check and given Mr. Barber's volunteer fire department. And that's all that?
Okay.
That's it.
All right, thank you, George. All right. Mr. Nick Smith?
Yeah, I just wanna reiterate my gratitude to all the um citizens and folks who've engaged on Dora. Uh honestly, it's been nothing but positive and people have been thoughtful and made it better and so uh it's just been really gratifying, I guess, to interact with folks on on something in this work and uh I encourage folks to come to the committee meeting and and throw their two cents in. It's really helpful.
What's Dora?
Dora is a designated outdoor. Dora is a designated outdoor, uh, beverage, refreshment.
Area.
Area, so we're exploring setting one in, in the city of Nelsonville.
I see. I'm familiar with the experimentation and assets, but I didn't know. Thank you.
Okay. All right, and with that, we have to go into executive session, O R C one twenty-one dash twenty-two for legal and personnel matters, inviting in the city attorney, Mr. Bob Toy, and the city manager, Mr. Scott Frank.
Who else?
Nope.
Oh, I'll motion. Go to executive.
I'll second that. And Susan, you may leave it to me, too.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Child?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
We stay here.
Uh, the time is seven fifty-two.